...convene for our Mayor Commission work session. First item on the agenda is the Sunset Lounge presentation by Mr. Ward. Good morning.
For the record, of course, I'm John Ward. I'm your CRA director and today we are going to talk about the Sunset Lounge project, the culmination of which is we're going to review the guaranteed maximum price proposal from our construction manager at risk. I've got staff here today to answer questions. Our architects with us. Cooper Construction has their team here today as well. So, anything that you want to know about this project, it's a good time to ask it. So, to start, I wanted to do kind of a level set today for everybody and especially the newer commissioners that weren't here from the inception of this project. And I've been asked about 100 times by folks over the years, how was it that we settled on the Sunset project, the Sunset Lounge, as a project that was worthy of our attention, time, and treasure? And I wanted to take you back a while to the Stoll and Lee report. It was officially called the Northwest Neighborhood Strategic Development Plan, but everybody in the neighborhood calls it the Stoll and Lee Report. And Commissioner Nearing and I were talking about it this morning and he said, you know, this is the bible in the Northwest neighborhood for development. We did it, it's the first significant planning exercise that we did in that neighborhood and unfortunately, as so many times it happens, we do these great planning exercises and then it kind of gets stuck on a shelf. So, when I got here, the first thing I did was start reading things and I read the Stoll and Lee Report and it was incredibly informative about the needs of the community. They obviously spent a tremendous amount of time with a lot of civic outreach and a lot of input. I talked to Commissioner Riles. He said he participated in the Stoll and Lee meetings and I know a lot of other folks did as well. So, it makes a difference in looking at that. So, if you want to know how we did that, this weekend we did a historic tour in the Northwest and Habitat for Humanity referenced that there were the three most significant buildings in the historic Northwest where Payne Chapel, Tabernacle, Baptist Church, and the Sunset. So, it always bubbled up, but something that was a significant reference was Stoll and Lee. And in Section 5.2, Stoll and Lee suggests that the Sunset Club would become the nucleus for a mixed-use cluster around a small park at 8th Street and Rosemary Avenue. And that is precisely where we find ourselves today. We've arrived at the point where we're actually squeezing the trigger on a lot of these concepts that were developed back then. And this is what we mean by a mixed-use cluster. So, the top square is the location, the present-day location of the Sunset and you can see there's a small apartment building beside it. We've taken that building down and the entire lot will be devoted to the project we're going to describe today. And then below it, the square there is that park referenced by the Stoll and Lee Report. Now, Stoll and Lee had something of a little smaller park in mind. They were using half the block. In all of the drawings that I've seen, in 2010, staff commissioned the AECOM to develop a working plan for a park there. And I've seen several drawings for it. And their vision was a fairly insignificant one. It's a place where you could set up 10 by 10 tents and have an outdoor, kind of a festival sort of a thing, but it wasn't a very significant location. So, our plans had gone far beyond that in acquiring, when we acquired the Sunset, acquired the Sunset, we also acquired the parkland to the south of it. And then the horizontal square beneath that is what we're referring to now as Heritage Alley. And that's where we're going to develop our economic development opportunities. And we'll talk about that briefly, too. And then the square that's almost off of the sheet here, down lower from that, is the best location, we think, for the National Center for Arts and Technology, the jobs training program that we've been talking about developing for years. We're currently having conversations with the Salvation Army about acquiring that site and how it would work with their programming and that sort of thing. But the point to be made here is that you can see that instead of trying to rely on development where an individual site has to live on its own and becomes its own destination, we're obviously clustering all of our assets here in a very deliberate manner. So, it's not an accident that it happened this way and it's precisely what was envisioned in the Stoll and Lee Report. So, briefly, here's where the Sunset got its start, as a roof garden on top of a garage. This is where it was as the Second World War began. This is from an ad in 1942 that showed up in the Crisis Magazine. And by then, the developers, which really started building this thing in 1933, had gotten to this point where it was pretty much in the shape it is today. So, as we started our program of development, another key thing that I want to talk about today is the amount of civic engagement and outreach that we've done with the community. My staff has done a fabulous job of reaching out and making friends and talking about projects and truly getting folks on board with what we want to do at every step of the way. It continues. It's exactly the exercise Stoll and Lee had done 20 years before that and we're just continuing on that same exercise. And this shows you, we did a series of events. We started thinking about how do we keep the Sunset top of mind with the community? How do we keep them thinking about it as a viable place? So, before it was closed for renovations, we did a series of jazz concerts there, filled the place up half a dozen times. We were showing, at every one of these events, we showed drawings and posters about what the Sunset could be, what was it like? And we had people talking with folks, getting their opinions on what they thought about potential plans. And you can see here, they're working with very simple kinds of exercises in showing us what you think would be an appropriate thing in the neighborhood. Now, we've discovered, I have a staff member, Alicia Nguyen, and Alicia, of course, many of you have met her, has her doctorate in applied cultural anthropology. And Alicia has taught us a lot of things about the nuances of dealing in communities. And one of them was that if you expect, if you have surveys and you expect this community to fill out a survey, you will never have your surveys filled out because the community will stand and talk to you till the cows come home. They'll tell you everything that you want to know. They will talk to you for as long as you want to talk, but if you hand them a piece of paper and ask them to fill it out, you will have a whole bunch of unfilled paper. So, what we were doing were exercises so that folks could very simply give us opinions and some guidance on things that they liked and wanted to see, not only at the Sunset but also in the neighborhood from an economic development standpoint and the park, too. So, here we're looking at what do you want to see in the park? Do you want to see fountains? Do you want to see basketball courts? Do you want to see play areas? Do you want to see areas for concerts and all of that sort of thing? So, we did this over a series of meetings over more than a two-year period. You may recall that in 2016, this agency won the Knight Foundation's Cities Challenge Grant to do civic engagement in this community for this project. So, we've literally since 2016 been working in the trenches, working with the community, having literally, I would say, more than 100 meetings, small and large, with the community, listening to what they wanted to see. And then we did events. This is a pop-up park. So, we literally went and built furniture to furnish the park and laid it out, so how do you think this works? So, this is us assembling things in the morning with some community volunteers, putting things together. And again, ongoing constantly, talk about what you want to see here. Tell us what you want us to do. Pop-up park number two got a little more elaborate. The pink thing down there was an entrance to the park. Imagine walking through this kind of an entrance. Should it be trellis or what would you like to see? The kids, I can tell you, this is where I discovered that our Parks Department apparently has a rule that we don't allow tree swings. But I can tell you that the tree swing was the most popular thing in that park that day. And there were never fewer than three kids on the tree swing. And how popular was it? They broke the tree swing. There were like six kids on it at the end of the day and finally it gave up and fell down.
Probably why it's not allowed.
Yeah, that's probably why. But, so this is community engagement and it's true as sense. Fabulous stuff, great concerts, but again, everywhere, you can see my staff, there's Gina there on the lower left, we're walking around surveying folks and getting opinions in everything that we do. And this is the point of the exercise. The point of the exercise is family and community building. This is why we're there. This is what we're doing. And from that, we developed this plan. This is the Sunset Lounge 2.0. Our architect's over here. Darren, raise your hand, say hi. When we first started talking about the Sunset, the initial conversation was that we could take the original building, which is on the left there, the one with the round top, and we thought, well, if we went to the north side of the building and we just did a tower on the north side of the building, it would encompass the kinds of things that we needed in the building. This is obviously not an ADA compliant building, so you can't get to the second floor without going up an incredibly rickety concrete stair, which I can't believe everybody didn't fall down. I can't walk up the thing and I can't imagine after three cocktails and seeing a great music show that you're going to make it down in one piece. So, you can't get anybody upstairs. The bathrooms were built in the '30s at some point, horrible. God bless you women because as a guy, I wouldn't go into men's room. I can't imagine the women's room, it was miserable. And everything else that we needed over there. So, this is, we went from a small, little bubble concept on the north end of the building into what if, what if, what if we built what was really needed in the community? What if we take this from the standpoint of what will we build anywhere? What is the best thing to do on this site? And that lets me reference one more thing that I want to talk about from the Stoll and Lee piece. Stoll and Lee had, in their far-reaching and foresight-filled report, they had three conditions, what they call conditions for success. These are the three things that you had to do to be successful in this neighborhood. Guess what the first thing is? Number one, under Article 4.4, number one says, "Thinking big." That's your number-one success piece, thinking big. Big is in double-sized letters. Think big. This is thinking big. Number two was a master development entity, that's us, and public will is number three. So, getting the public on your side, having somebody that will engage with them, and then having somebody that will in fact make this thing happen, which is what the CRA is doing, is the key to success. So, just briefly, for those of you that haven't seen the plans, inside the first floor, you can see on the left, there'll be, as there always has been, a classic bar in the front. It'll be larger and a little bit nicer than the original bar that we'd seen in the last few years. And we're also adding a full-service restaurant for the community. So, they'll have a great place to eat and drink. Herefore, you know, historically, people would bring in food trucks or just set up a line inside and somebody would cook at home and bring some things in. So, this is going to be a first-class restaurant and bar. But they never had a kitchen, of course. So, part of the things that's going into the new wing are, is the location for a kitchen, which is here, this area. There are, of course, also elevators, two elevators to get you upstairs, a whole new set of, on the far right, a whole new set of bathrooms, much larger and of course completely modern, and a completely new pre-function area. Now, we gave some thought to this thing. How is this building going to work for everybody in the community? And I know that the bar is a great thing, it's been there forever, and the only way that you could ever get in the old Sunset was to come through this lower door down here and go in through the bar. And that's fine if you're going for a cocktail. But there are a lot of folks that are not necessarily going there to drink, don't necessarily want to drink, but would love to be part of this community facility. So, in designing the building, Darren came up with a great lobby setup. So, we'll enter. Here, and then here, and there's an entrance then to the restaurant, which will be set up just, you know, with one of the normal maître d's stands and things. So, you can come in and go straight into the restaurant without having to go through the bar. So, if you've just come from church and drinking is not necessarily the first thing on your mind, then you might want to do that. So, it works both ways. Kitchen will serve that area. And we'll have, this is an early incarnation of the design, we'll have a performance space in the restaurant so you could have small local bands and entertainment going in the restaurant and that sort of thing, too. So, there'll be an opportunity for first-floor entertainment, great new bathrooms, elevators to get you upstairs. This is the second floor and of course, the second floor is the ballroom. Sometime in the 1970s, the owners of the building decided that big music venues had died, nobody was doing big band music anymore, and the need for ballrooms kind of went out of fashion. So, they went upstairs and it's a double-height space in there, even though it's only a two-story building, it's a double-height space. And across the mezzanine, they floored it in and they built a series of apartments, two floors of apartments upstairs for, I think one of the fraternities was using it initially, but a series of apartments were there. So, the first thing that we had to do when Cooper was fully engaged was they started doing selective demolition work, tearing out the existing pieces. And we had to, the first thing we did was address the apartments upstairs to get it down and see what we were dealing with. But again, we'll have, as you can see, a pre-function space there in the hallway, just like when you go to the conference center, the convention center over here, and everybody has coffee out in the hall before you go in for the event. We'll do the same things here, great bathrooms, storage spaces. And the other thing that the old Sunset never had was a greenroom space for the band. We've seen great pictures of performers in there on their stage, but I guess in between sets, all they had to do was sit down at another table with everybody in the audience. I mean, there was, they didn't have showers, they didn't have a place to get ready, they didn't have a place to get offstage and get ready to perform. So, they'll have that in the new facility. And this is what it looks like today, after we've torn out the two floors of apartments. I've shown this picture before. This is from the old days, no dancing in the balcony. I love that picture. And this is what it's going to look like, or a version, something like this. Obviously, we're going to take it back to that great wooden floor, dance floor, it'll be fabulous. This is looking toward the stage. There's a curtain in front of it. So, we're going to treat this like a modern performing arts facility, great sound, great lights, the ability to open and close a curtain, the ability to have green rooms for the performers and give them the ability to get on and off without having to interact with everybody. This is looking toward the back of the, yeah, that's the front of the building where it has the little Juliet balcony. And this will be the area where we'll have tables and chairs around the mezzanine as well. So, how we operate this will be done in different ways. When we have concerts, you may set it up for concert seating with just chairs and things. When you have things like the Kiwanis Club or whomever meeting over there, you can have tables and chairs on the main floor and upstairs, too. But this is the feel of the building. So, let's get down to why we're here today. There are, as I've visited with everybody now and as I explained to you, there are two ways to do a construction project like this, a significant construction project. The city's procurement department has been using the Construction Management at Risk program for a while now. The last two fire departments, fire stations that we did were using that method. And we did the same thing here. We went out for a CMAR invitation. I can't remember if there were four or five respondents. You and your predecessors sat as an examination board and you selected the construction manager at risk. And from that, the mission was to pick the CMAR and then we would negotiate the terms and go forward with that. Now, the other way of doing projects like this is what we call bid-build. And when you do that, that means that you go out and you design a building and you put the plans out on the street and people bid on them, they submit their bids to you, and you select the most likely contractor and then they build a thing. Now, the fallacy to that, that always happens, and listen, there are pluses and minuses in both ways of doing these things. The minus to that thing is always that invariably, for whatever reason, we tend to start looking at the selection of the contractor from strictly the lens of cost. So, that's why the low bidder always, oftentimes, gets picked for the projects and about five minutes after you pick the low bidder, he starts beating you over the head with change orders and it never ends. So, your price of your project, you know what the price of your project is on the day after it got finished because there are always things that come up. More concrete went in the hole than I thought was going to go in the hole. I did a garage once in another city and they measured it for, you know, X numbers of units of concrete and it went 10 times over that and I thought they discovered a cavern or something because they were filling something up with concrete. But that's how that system works. So, the advantage of the CMAR system is that they will give us a guaranteed maximum price. So, you know what your exposure is. You're going to build a building, here's the building you're going to build, here's what your guaranteed maximum price is on that. So, that's a good thing. Cooper was selected, as I said, after the RFQ process and they have given us a GMP. Now, we have been working, there is no one in this room more frustrated than Cooper Construction today because we have been working with these numbers since literally January and they've done a great job of giving us very detailed, very responsive documents on this process. And they gave us, first they gave us a 60% GMP. As we are developing the numbers, the 60% number came out and they gave us a good, that's kind of a hail mary guess at that point because you've still got a lot of development work to go and you've got a lot of things to be called out for in the documents, how are you going to finish things and all that sort of thing. So, a 60% number is a good indicator, but you can't go to the bank with it. So, the 60% GMP looked like seven and a half, 7.8, a little under $8 million. So, we knew we were headed toward that kind of thing. In January, we got an earlier GMP and that GMP was $10,800 and change. So, I can tell you that it was a bigger number than any number that I had thought the building was going to cost. So, we didn't accept that GMP and in collaboration with Cooper, our partners, we went back out and had the subcontractors rebid the project. So, you can see, in the interim period, we got this price point at the $10,445 at the end of May, May the 26th, I think. And we have been trying to massage that number since then. We've taken $400,000 off the top of it through the rebid process. There are a few items in there that may change as we go through the development process, floor finishes, we may take out a concrete floor and build another concrete floor and that sort of thing. So, there'll be a few wiggle room kinds of things in here, but essentially, your GMP is this number, $10,445,017. I'm calling it 10.5. Now, you need to understand that the 10.5 we're talking about are construction costs. That is not the entire cost of the project. There are always things that are missing in there and there are always reasons that they're missing. So, let me describe to you what the rest of the slide says. We're in the process right now of negotiating, obviously as you saw in the drawings, we're going to do a full-service restaurant and bar. We are uniquely unqualified to run full-service restaurants and bars, so we are, of course, interviewing now people to do that for us in whatever fashion. It may be a lease thing, we'll just have to see how it develops. But as a process, you can't design a kitchen unless you know what the menu is. What are you going to be cooking in there? I mean, do I need a lot of fryers? Do I need to bake bread? Do I need to do all these kinds of things? So, as a result, what we've done in the plans is there's a square carved out for where the kitchen is going to go. We don't know exactly the equipment and the kinds of things it's going to need in there. So, in my number, that is the bottom number down there, I've plugged in numbers for the kitchen. I've plugged, FFNE is fixtures, furniture, and equipment. Obviously, Cooper Construction is a construction firm, we don't need to buy chairs from them. So, we will do that under a separate contract with a commercial supplier. So, that's what FFNE is. It's all of the furniture that you sit on and the bar stools and that sort of thing. The AV equipment similarly will come from a specialty contractor that will furnish the sound, lights, video kinds of things to run a ballroom and performance spaces. There's an allowance for finished carpentry for the front of the bars and things like that. There's some soft costs that have increased as we've gone along. And the best soft-cost example would be the architectural fees. Our architect fees, as the project becomes a larger, more significant project, the architect fees go up. They charge you typically a percentage of the cost of the building. They were charging us one thing when it was a $7 million building, when it's a $10 million building, another cost. So, some of our soft costs are increasing. And I plugged in, since I'm not the smartest guy in the world, I plugged in some contingency money at the end to make sure that if I came up a little bit short, we'd have enough. In fact, I've got 280, in my bottom-line $12,250,000 number, $280,000 of that is a contingency number that I plugged in just to make sure we had enough. And Cooper has $200,000 in contingency in their number as well. It'll be easier for me not to spend mine than theirs because a $10 million project, $200,000 is not a lot of wiggle room. So, we'll see how much of that we get away with. And one last conversation about the GMP. Since we've acquired this number, we've been having conversations with them, again, talking about the subs and how things are going to get done, that kind of thing. We also talked about what happens if one of the, you can look at all these ticket items, but a big-ticket item would be like plumbing for this building. What happens if my estimate is $1 million for all the plumbing in this building? What happens if it comes in at $920,000? Now, we know that they're giving us a guaranteed maximum price and you know how you would do guarantees. You would always give yourself plenty of room in there to not come up short. So, we know that there's some fluff in these numbers just to make sure that we've got enough money to get everybody covered and paid. So, what if it comes in that way? What happens then? Do I get billed for the $1 million or do we get billed for the $920,000? So, what we've negotiated with Cooper through Frank is that if the numbers come in under the GMP, if each one of these line items comes in less money, more inexpensively than their bid indicates, we will split the difference in the savings. And we've negotiated a 60-40 split in which the CRA will get 60% of the savings and they, for their diligence in getting us a under-budget price, will get 40% as an incentive. We think that's fair and we also think that that is a good way for you to have a level of comfort with only having one number. So, I can't bring you, I'm not bringing you today, three numbers, pick a contractor, who's the cheapest. I'm bringing you a guaranteed maximum price and an arrangement in which, if the price points come in lower, that we are able to participate in that savings. And just briefly, this is the jazz park that was envisioned in 2010 by AECOM. It's that small, half-a-block thing, just a kind of a lawn for putting up events. But I wanted to show you, in fact, there's Jackie Cooper, front and center in the middle of the picture. I wanted to show you, again, part of the events and looking at the park. This is a specific park planning exercise that we had at the Kinsey Center. A bunch of folks showed up. I have to tell you, I'm astounded. We had a four-hour planning session and nobody left. And we had this great gal leading the session and she made everybody get up and dance and do things. So, everybody's getting ready to dance here, please. This is a planning exercise, so. And then they sat down and did the hard work of doing these things. And everybody's drawing and giving their input. And I say this to you again to underpin the amount of public input and engagement that we've had on this project. It keeps going on, it hasn't finished yet, and this shows you, even though this is the park planning exercise, in the background you can see the easels where we continue to talk about the look of the Sunset, what it's going to look like, what it's going to have within it. And in fact, here, we're starting to talk about the Mickens Moore Project, another project that we've that we've got in mind, that we want to engage the community in. We've got Dr. Alice Mickens Moore's house that will be developed as a historical site, and we're talking about that constantly as we go along. And this is what emerged from those planning exercises, a plan for the historic Heart and Soul Park, they named it. It will tell the story of the African-American experience in Palm Beach County, and we want to tell it, warts and all. So this will be developed as a story by the community, and be an interesting exercise. This is kind of what it'll look like. And then again, on the south of Seventh Street here, that's the location for the Heritage Alley. And again, we've seen this before, the twin-matched shotgun-looking houses that can be used as live workspaces, or imagine, again, imagine if this were a restaurant, that the back building could be the kitchen and a bar, and the front building could be where you serve most of the food. Or if it were two retail businesses, imagine businesses that worked well together, like a hair salon in the back and a clothing store in the front, or something like that. The ultimate goal of this is for us to put it in position so that the local community can actually buy these buildings, and the business owners can own their own buildings. And we'll get to that further down the road. But I wanted to tell you that I've got the 60% numbers from Burkhart Construction on this. So Seventh Street and the alley for the Heritage Alley looks like a $2.9 million estimate. The buildings are going to cost us about $1 million to develop that. And we've got, I think the roadwork also includes some of the park. Don't we have the park number? I don't think I got that on here. We've got a park number?
2.8.
2.8 million, estimated to develop the park. So that's where we are. And the reason I want to mention that to you is that, at the end of the day, I'm not crazy about a $10 million number. I'm not crazy about the $12 million number, but that is what the number is, and that's what it's going to take to do the project, it appears. The best reference I can give you is, last week, you cut the ribbon on the new fire station. The fire station was a 10,000-square-foot building, the price was $5.4 million. That's $540 a square foot. Our price point is something a little north of $500 on this project, 510, 520, something like that. But it's a significant number, but that's what the numbers seem to be rolling in. And with that, I'm open for questions and comments.
Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you, Madam President. How do you turn it on? Oh, there we go. Okay. So, turning back to the guaranteed maximum price, which, it's still up there. So if I understand you correctly, we're not guaranteed to pay the maximum price, which is the way it kind of ordinarily works in a GMP situation, right?
Typically, yeah, you get a price, and that's your price.
The reality is, that you end out paying the maximum price, even if it were to come in.
Yes, sir. We're hoping it comes in under budget, and we'll work toward that, but you need to understand that that's your exposure.
Okay. So there's line item things, obviously, and assuming that any one of those line items comes in under the bid amount, the amount that was allocated?
Yes, sir.
Then we're splitting the difference of that at 60-40?
Yep.
Not each line item?
Let me, this is Arturo Cantaro. Arturo is on your staff at CRA. He's my construction manager, with years and years and years of experience, and he has memorized these lines that you've seen, and he's going over everything. It's his responsibility to look at the pay requests from them, make sure they are accurate. He looks at all of the bills from the subs and everything like that. He'll be fully informed of everything that's going on, and you will know what the actual price is.
I guess it's not each individual line item, it's the whole project as a whole?
No, it's each individual line item. We're looking at everything that comes in. So that's why I gave the example of the plumbing. If the plumbing comes in at that lower number, we're looking at the plumbing, not at the project.
I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir. Now, let me say one thing, if I could. While we're talking about money, the $12 million and change that I've estimated for the total price is coming out of the CRA's TIF money. This is not bonded. We didn't go out for bond for any of the Sunset project. I've got a little over six, two or three million in this year's current budget. We knew that we'd probably start construction this year. We didn't know what the number was going to come in yet, but we wanted to make sure we covered ourselves. And then we have already, in our proposed budget that we're going to bring to you in about a month, or a couple of weeks, we've got the other $6 billion identified out of TIF. So we have the money to do the project, and it will come out of your cash-flowed TIF. It is not a bonded money. So whatever that number is, we can cover it, we've anticipated. That's anticipating that you will approve, of course, the budget that we propose to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riles?
Where did this project start, in terms of, was there a bid done initially?
Madam President, Commissioner, the project started when we recognized the importance of the building to the community, and it was owned at the time by some local real estate investors, the Cammon Estor family. And I started going to, I started taking the Cammon Estors to concerts, actually. We went out to clubs and to schools.
Not to cut you off, Mr. Ward, I'm trying to find out, how did we get Mr. Cooper?
Well, we got Mr. Cooper as we went through a process. We issued an RFQ, we had--
The RFQ was for what?
Request for qualifications as a construction manager.
And did they give you a price at that time?
They did not. No one did. They only were there to determine their qualifications to do the job.
Okay. So at some point, someone gave you a price?
No, sir. The only time we've ever operated off of prices is if the architect, as we are starting the design process, said, "Well, I think it's going to cost about this much," but no.
So this is the first time that we've gotten a price?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Sorry for taking the long way, I didn't know where you were going.
Thank you. Commissioner Neri?
Thanks. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. Ward. So first, a comment, and then I have questions, but I'll kind of go to the comments first, or the comment first. So I think this is, could be a great case study in what happens when a city commissions a study. I believe the Stullen Lee study was released in 2002, and we're in 2019, so 17 years ago. And at that time, the city paid approximately $170,000, which is a significant amount of money today, in 2019. We paid that in, I guess it would have been 2000 or 2001. And to your point, and thank you for, at the beginning of your presentation, talking about some of the comments around the Stullen Lee report. And in the report, you know, as you have articulated, the sunset and the development of the sunset was critical, right? They deemed, we commissioned, and they deemed that as a part of the community, this development of the sunset would be critically important. I can only imagine if, and this is not to say other commissioners or commissions and administrations didn't think through this, but again, 17 years later, we're looking at a GMP construction total of $10.5 million. I wonder if that study had not sat on the shelf for 17 years, the price that we might have paid, maybe half of that. So that's just, that's just a comment, and I mean, I get it. It's very frustrating, but it is the reality of what happens sometimes with these studies that we commission, and they sit on shelves. And now, if this is approved and goes forward, as I support, and I don't talk about why I support it, but we're, you know, we're looking at almost $12 million. I believe, in our city, I believe that there are several projects that move the needle. I believe the golf course in 8111 is one of those projects. I believe the anchor site is one of those projects. Our Curry Park is one of those projects that moves the needle. Tent site and the sunset. And I really do believe that the development of the sunset will have a cascading effect, as long as we take into consideration, and as long as I'm on the commission, I would be supporting that. And I believe it was articulated in the Stullen Lee report of the preservation approach, as opposed to just tearing things down. And so, a lot of comments to get to the question now at hand, and I have a couple, but I'll just ask one, Madam President. One of the things, Commissioner, to your point, when we, as a commission, set, and I don't know if I was the only one on the commission, or was, okay, I was the only one on the commission, that decided on Cooper Construction to bring them, to take the lead on this project, one of the things that we talked about is making sure that we included the community, both in what the development would look like, but also in the tangible development of it. In other words, SBEs, subcontractors, the day laborers, whatever that looked like, the outreach to the community was going to be really, really important. How do we, how is this board going to be made aware of that process? Because that was at the crux. Of course, there were other things, but that was a major part, as I recall, of this RFQ that went out?
Yes, sir.
RFQ that went out was the involvement of the community, beyond, as you've shown, beyond just, you know, what do you want to see? But how do you make dollars off of this project? How, you know, if you have the capacity, you have the want and the desire, there's going to be opportunity to do that. How's that reported back to us? Maybe we're not there yet, but you've talked about subcontractors. How does that report come back to this commission?
In, Madam President, Commissioner, in, I think, probably two ways. The first way is that one of Frank's new jobs is outreach to the community, hiring, making sure they have opportunities. He can speak to it better than I can, it's his job. But he's going to be intimately involved in making sure that folks have those opportunities to show up for job fairs and get in front of the subcontractors that will actually do the performance work that's there. And beyond that, Jackie Cooper, as nice a fellow as he is, has a secret weapon, and it's his wife, Veronica, and she is in the PR outreach business. And she, as part of their presentation when they were selected for this, went to links to illustrate to us how much community outreach was going to be involved in a robust fashion to the community for this. And I can tell you that before we had a construction contract with them, I just showed you a picture of that park-building exercise. They're not going to build a park, but they were there at that exercise, again, getting to know the community and talking with them. So I am confident that they will be reporting back to you on a regular basis on what their efforts have been. Frank will know exactly what the percentage, they have requirements specifically, but he'll report back to you exactly what the percentage of local hiring and the SBE pieces are. So I think we've got that covered. And Frank, if you want to address that?
Frank Hayden, today, Director of Procurement. Not sure what it'll be tomorrow, but whatever job it is, I attempt to take it on. Yes, we track all dollars spent on projects as it relates to SBEs, or MBEs, or WBEs. As I was sharing with the mayor just the other day, last year, over the quarters, we spent about $9 million on SBEs, whether they're primes or subs. That was over the whole four quarters of last year. This year, just in the third quarter this year, we've already exceeded that $9 million that we did for last year. And that comes from capturing the dollars spent on each of our contracts for subcontractors, SBEs, MBEs, and WBEs. So we work very closely with the contractors to get that information. We send them communication. If our numbers don't quite match up, they verify what their numbers are. So we track that information, and we keep track of that, and we provide that to you all on a regular basis, in terms of where we are with our dollars being spent.
If I could, while you're here, Mr. Hayden, it sounds like we might have a few more questions for you as well. It's my understanding that the CMAR process also allows us to be more involved in the subcontractor selection process, and I understand the CRA staff was involved in that process. Is that one of the pros that Mr. Ward talked about, that, you know, was a pro in your mind as well?
It does allow you to have some involvement in terms of the cost on that. We try not to interfere in the relationship between the prime and their subs. That is a way to ensure the fact that if the sub doesn't do what they're supposed to do, then the prime can't come back and say, "Well, if you hadn't asked me, then I never would have gotten into that." But we can have input, and 90% of the time, the prime does listen to our concerns as it relates to that. That gets us there. The primary value that people see in CMRs is the cost, as Mr. Ward indicated to you. Strict bid contracts, normally, the change orders will drive you crazy. In this case, you've got a number. And for most of those, those primes are going to work very, very hard to stay within that number, because they don't want to eat the difference between them. So it is the cost that generally drives us towards CMZ risk.
Great.
I just had, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just had a couple of questions. You indicated that we spent $9 million with SBEs last year?
Yes, sir.
What did we spend total?
That was it, total?
No, no, no. Total.
Oh, in terms of the total amount of money that we were spent? Right off the top of my head, Commissioner, I cannot tell you that I will provide you with that information.
Is it triple?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We, our ultimate goal is to stay within 15% of what we're spending for SBEs and WBEs. And last year, we talked it out, my numbers serve me correct, somewhere around 24% of the money that was spent on contracting went toward SBEs.
In terms of Mr. Cooper, do we have any idea on what his percentages will be for SBEs?
If, I cannot, right off the top of my head, tell me that, but I'm sure Mr. Cooper would be more than happy to share with you. But I will tell you this, much like the fire station that you all just cut the ribbon for, on all of our contracts, it is 15%. That's what we have sat with. The majority of the time, they exceed those numbers. D. Stevens was above that 15%, and so I'm confident that that'll be the same area we'll end up with, with the Coopers.
What guarantees do you have regarding Mr. Cooper's and his company?
Good morning. Veronica Cooper, Cooper Construction Management. We do have 48% SBE participation allocated for this project.
And how many of the, what percentage of that 48% are African-Americans and women?
So the city of West Palm Beach, at the time of procurement, had an SBE policy, so there was no designation at that time that identified their race or gender, although if we wanted to speculate, we would imagine that the majority of our SBE firms are either female-owned, or African-American, or Hispanic-owned firms.
And how many are local?
Well, in order to be SBE, they would all have some kind of local.
They would either be Palm Beach County, or within the city of West Palm Beach.
So you don't know how many African-American firms you have?
Again, the designation, but I could, I know that our plumber is African-American, certified with the county. We have an African-American-owned firm who's going to be doing all of the staffing, and also an African-American-owned firm.
Lucci?
Lucci, Andrew Lucci, A&amp;A Associates. We also have an African-American-owned firm who's going to be assisting us with temporary staffing on the project for each of the subcontractors, who are looking for additional labor. So that number can go up through their participation with their assisting of the subcontractors.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. This is a project I know predates back to my days on the commission too, so there's just some things that I want to make sure I understand, and my commentary is on the And my commentary is on the process. I know Cooper Construction has been a great partner in the demolition. And so, you know, as I look at this, I look at it how I would look at any kind of construction project in saying, if I were doing this in the private sector, I would get three bids, no matter what the methodology, whether it was max price or whether it was bid build. So going back in time, again, not being on the commission during that period, we have basically what adds up to a twenty million dollar project when we look at the park and everything all in, broken up into various, you know, we have the road, the building, the park. And on this, we seem to have coupled the demolition and the rebuild. So is that, is that the way it was sent out at the time? Whenever we did the bid, it was for an RFQ on demo and rebuild? And why did we couple those together if that was the way that it was presented?
They, Madam President, Commissioner, they were coupled together because we viewed, especially since this is primarily, more than sixty percent of this project is a historic restoration project. We viewed it as a learning exercise for the contractor that was going to rebuild the building to be intimately familiar with the building conditions as they existed. What kind of shape, we had the mold, we had mold remediation done during this process. They were the ones that removed the second-floor apartment so they know intimately, again, the state of the blocks upstairs and what they're going to have to do for bracing the mezzanine floor with the bracing and just any number of things. So we thought it was a smart thing to do, frankly.
So at this point...
Also, let me point out that they had on their team, sorry, they had on their team Hedrick Brothers, who are also listed as their experts on historic restoration projects as well. So they brought that to the table as well. So we had the ability to have folks that were experienced in historic restoration and would get familiar with the build back.
Sure, and I certainly agree with that. Having done several personal historic renovations, that it's important to have that kind of expertise. And I guess the challenge that I face at this point is, when we're looking at a number, be it ten, be it twelve, all in at the end of the day, there's no real comparison that we have. And that, to me, would be the best way to analyze this, is whatever methodology, and again, positives and negatives to both, to say, what is the maximum price against three bidders? And take a look, again, I understand it's not always just on cost basis. Sometimes it's on performance, Allah, having a historic renovation specialist on your team. But how can we better apples-to-apples comparison so that we just get a litmus test?
Well, normally, Madam President, Commissioners, Frank Hayden, when you do a GMP, you have done the competitive process of selecting whoever the vendor is going to be. And then you work with them and negotiate with them on the price. Then to turn around and ask others to compete puts the person that you initially selected at a disadvantage. If we were going to look at what our cost was, then we should have done a straight bid in terms of that. To now come back and ask others to compete based on the work that's already been done between the current prime and the architect on it, as I said, just seems to me to put a disadvantage to the team that we have put together. Having said that, if you all, as a commission, direct us to make that happen, then we'd be more than happy to figure that out.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. I think Ms. Rothenberg has a comment on this as well.
Generally, the statute has a two-step process. The first step is to identify the qualifications of the firms that are submitting. And in that step, you identify the top, you look at the top three, and then select who you're going to contract with, which is the second step where you come up with your price. So your price isn't in your original selection because you're looking at qualifications under the statute, under the process the statute sets up. And that's for the construction manager at risk as opposed to the straight bid.
If I could, Madam President, Commissioner, the only comparison, the price comparison that we were able to do was in looking at the subcontractors. We wanted to make sure we had coverage in the subs. So each one of them, again, Arturo went and looked at how many respondents we had for every specialty, how many plumbers responded, how many roofers responded, all the rest of this kind of thing. So we were looking for, in instances, some we had three and four. In some specialties, we only had one or two, relatively minor amount. But we did compare the, we compared the bones of the skeleton as we were building the piece. So we know that there was a comparison price for each one of the specialties at that level, but not at the GC level.
So just to follow up on that, and it kind of leads into the second piece of this, on any bid, whether it's max price or whether it's bid build, I, as the contractor, I'm placing a bet, in essence. I'm going to say my plumber's going to cost me, to your point, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But there's nothing within there that specifies, I mean, you need look no further than the plumbing aisle at the Home Depot to know you can get a faucet that's plastic for a cheaper number than you can get a brass cast faucet. So as far as the quality specs, is that Arturo's job?
No, ma'am, that's the, Madam President, madam, that's the architect's job. He specifies that. He gives a large document to the contractor specifying down to the nuts and bolts exactly what he gets, the type of hardware in the bathroom, the type of toilets, the kind of elevator. All that's specified by our architect. That's the only way we can make sure that we've got the kinds of material that we're interested in having.
And so when we have those spec sheets, that was all provided to some contractors to make sure we were bidding apples-to-apples on those subs as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I will say, as a follow-up on that, there are, there are half a dozen items that we are still looking at that could shift the price, you know, maybe a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. And the example, here's a good example. I can't recall, did we specify pre-finished flooring on the ballroom floor initially? Or, so initially, we were going to stick build the ballroom floor, bring in two-by-fours, build you a floor, mop it out, finish it. That's a cost attached to that. We have discovered there is a significant savings in getting a pre-finished floor that goes there. So the architect agrees, that's an appropriate thing to do. They bid it out on that price point, and that price got adjusted, so.
So I understand now, at this point where we are, having presented a price, where if you're going back out to bid, there's an unfair advantage having known that this is the price to bid, right? So I get that notion as well. But from a value engineering perspective, have we gone back over with the architect on things, just like we've described on the floor, to say, what else can we value engineer out of here that brings this price down?
Ma'am, I can tell you that that is the reason that we got our first GMP in January, and it is the end of July, and we are still kicking that can around. It's because we have been doing precisely that, value engineering the piece. We went back out to subs to make sure we had adequate coverage on the subs. We didn't feel we had adequate coverage on one or two of our items. Rebid those things. The architect has been intimately involved in this thing. He's sitting here today to answer any questions that you've got. But we have been with him and argued, we're still arguing, as I told you the other day. We're arguing about, do I want to put in a chiller system or do I want to put in a split HVAC system? I can save a hundred thousand dollars if I put in the split system. I want to know how much it costs me to operate that thing because if it costs me thirty thousand dollars more a year in my electrical bill three years from now, so what? I didn't save a thing if I have a better machine. There are advantages to both. So those are discussions we're still having, frankly. And that's why I said there may be an item or two that will move around a little. Those are the kinds of items that may do that. We're deciding, they had a floor. Originally, this building, the old building, was a garage. Now, they've got an original concrete floor in there that's still got oil pits in it where they used to work on cars and things. Are we going to take out the entire floor? We're going to patch the existing concrete floor? If we take out the whole thing, and then we put terrazzo over it, then there's a cost attached to that. So those are the things that are still, we'll come down to, a couple of months from now, we'll still be talking about those. It's exactly what you do on a job. Yeah, we look at all that stuff. And Arturo, without, I don't want to read you his CV and all this kind of thing. He's done this for a few decades. So I have good confidence, I have high confidence in my staff. I mean, I just met Jackie, and they're nice folks and all that kind of thing. But here's your price, and you're trying to get our money. But I know who I got over here, and I feel pretty good about it.
I'm sorry, if I just may wrap up this thought and conversation. I understand that we've gotten to this place over a series of time, and again, a longer period of time. And I am interested in moving this forward to get it to the community as fast as possible, but I also want to be mindful of dollars. Is there any process that we can create that doesn't create an unfair advantage to anyone that would be coming in, but would also give us a little bit more comfort on numbers of saying, here is market price compared to where we are, and here is reasons for overage or underage?
I think, Madam President, Commissioners, we can take a look, have some discussion with our legal folks in terms of a process we might be able to recommend that would make everyone a lot more comfortable with what the number is. And so we can take a look at that in terms of coming up with something for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, you mentioned in your presentation that it was when the GMP came in that it was more money than you had expected. Can you talk a little bit about the change in scope of the project as well? Because you mentioned that there was a tower in the beginning, and then now we're with two buildings. So did that go into your consideration?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, we've been looking at this project for five years now. And when we first started talking about it, when we selected the architect for the project, we started talking about what could we do with this building? And the original conversation that I had with the principal of REG, Rick Gonzalez, Rick says, "Oh, you know, it's two, three million dollar repair for the existing building," all this kind of thing. And I thought, well, that was a lot of money. But we would scratch our heads about it and see. And from that, they developed this kind of hail mary balloon plan for the north end of the building, as I said. But the more that we, the more that we looked at that, it didn't work. From our attitude on this thing, and I go back to conditions for success, number one, think big. We could Band-Aid the existing building. When I looked at the north-end tower, we would have had to have, they designed a lobby back there. So that meant, all of a sudden, I'm coming in the back door of the building. I'm at the back of the building, coming in this lobby, and there are a couple of little elevators and some small restrooms and things like that. And they just kind of were vertical things. That meant that all of the entrance and everything was at the rear of the building. There's a concept in designing buildings, especially with regard to handicapped entrances. People always talk to you about the emotional feeling that you get when you come into a building. Imagine how you love walking through these grand, well, coming into City Hall here, and we have this fabulous two-story atrium area, and it feels good, and it feels like a government structure, and I'm proud to be here, and it represents what it is. But imagine if every time you come to that building, you come in in a wheelchair, and you come in through the bathrooms in the back and up an alleyway and that kind of thing. I would suggest to you that your experience is not the experience that was designed by the architect for the average, for the population. That's not what you want to show. And that was kind of the feeling when we started looking at that, was we're not interested in doing the lowest common denominator, what do I have to do to put a Band-Aid on this thing? But what happens, what would happen if we designed the best building for this community just like we would design it anywhere else? Just like we would design it any other place in town? Doesn't matter what the neighborhood is or anything else like that. But what is the best way to do a performing arts facility that could serve the community not only as a restaurant and bar, but also as a place for every wedding reception from now on, or every poetry gathering, or any kind of, any kind of public event? You know, in so many communities, the only place you've got to go for a large public event are churches. You know, the church basement. Well, it's a wonderful thing for a lot of stuff, but how about just, how about we do something that really serves the community? And that was the thought when we started getting bigger. Let's make it, the restaurant came along like, well, we're not going to bring in food trucks. Let's have a restaurant. Let's have a restaurant. And to do that, you've got to have a kitchen, and that takes up a certain amount of room. Initially, we were talking about a catering kitchen, which just means you can warm stuff up and bring it in the back door kind of thing. Well, let's do it the right way. And one elevator is not enough if I've got five hundred people leaving an event at the same time. So I need staircases and a couple of elevators. So it needs to be more significant than that. And that bathroom thing, oh, man, that's, that was a whole nother conversation. So to do it the right way, that was the thought process, and it grew from there.
Thank you. I think this has been a really robust conversation.
Just a last comment.
Commissioner Neary?
Yeah, just, you know, I think we all, at least I can speak for myself, acknowledge that this is a, this is a large number. And it's not, it's not my bank account, it's our residents, it's everyone. And so we'd all like to see a number that, at least, again, let me speak for myself, a number that, you know, I can kind of wrap my arms around. But again, I kind of go back to my opening statement, which is, this is a case study in that when we commission these studies, we need to be ready for what we're going to hear. And we need to be able to act on that, and we haven't. So as my aunt used to say, what doesn't come in the rents will come in the, what doesn't come in the wash will come in the rents. And so you pay now or you pay later. And again, I see this as a project that has and will have a cascading effect. I see it as, again, for me, one of the top, you know, five or six projects in our city that move the needle in an exponential way. And so I'm very supportive of it. But understand that this, you know, this twelve point, you know, two million dollars is a lot of money. My question is, and I think you mentioned this, if we were to move forward, we would be talking about a certain percentage coming out in the TIF in this fiscal year. And in next fiscal year, beginning October 1st, would be the remaining amount?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ward. Yes, sir. We've got, Madam President, Commissioner, I've got, I think it's six point two million dollars identified for this construction project in this year's budget. And we'll take the balance out of, we've already budgeted in next year's budget from that. And again, it'll be paid for in the TIF.
Okay. One more question. This was just a presentation. Are you looking for, because I've heard a couple of different things. I want to make sure I'm clear on what our next steps are.
What we're doing today is, I've visited with everyone, of course. I'm here to answer your questions. And then today, we wanted to have a robust, a good public discussion with you as a group. If you are amenable to it, I'm going to agenda this on the special meeting on the 29th of July. And at that point, I'm going to ask you to vote up or down on whether or not to fund this. And that being the case, then we will, we will intend to get the, get the construction company moving on the project. This is a twelve to fifteen month, let's call it fifteen-month project. So that will tell you when it will be open. I'd say spring of 2021 at this point. But I'm going to ask you to vote it up or down at the next meeting if you want me to move this forward.
Commissioner Shof had a question?
So just to follow up to that, if we're talking about putting on an agenda, I know my request today was to try to find some way to compare these numbers. Will we be provided that prior to that meeting?
Madam President, Commissioners, as I said, we'll have a conversation with our legal department as I was attempting to run this through my brain as we were sitting here. We would try our best, I'm just not sure. And the reason I say that is because we have a team and the architect, which, as Mr. Ward pointed out, as things came up, they adjust price. So now we've got a package that we're going to put out for someone to verify whether that's a good number or not when they didn't jump through the hoops and go through all this stuff of getting there. So we can, and once again, I'll have to check with legal, in terms of what is the process that we could go through to get a, a number that would make us all feel comfortable? And I would imagine that is, if the number we have now and what comes in out in the street is close to that number, not like four million dollars less, then that would make us feel a lot more comfortable about that number. And so we've just got to figure out, how do we go about making that happen?
If I may, what I thought I heard Mr. Ward say was that he took the numbers that came in on all of those individual numbers and had his construction staff compare them. They can certainly provide the comparisons and the information that they looked at to see that the numbers you were getting were reasonable numbers, or not reasonable numbers, whichever it was. But I thought I heard John say that he looked, they looked at the numbers that were submitted, and that they felt that they were good numbers. So he can absolutely show you the exercises that he went to to come to the conclusion that he felt that the numbers were substantiated. that he felt that the numbers were substantiated and fair in the market. And then you can decide whether or not that's a number that you want to go forward with. But as I sit here today, if you decide not to go with this particular company because of the numbers, I think you're, in essence, starting over in a new process.
And not to say that we can't always improve on our processes, but when, we followed the same process for other RFQ where we've selected one contractor and then not received three bids.
Yes. And, Madam President and Commissioners, for the two fire stations that we did, we went through a CMR on both of those. We made a selection for the firms which were going to build those. They went through the same process of working with the architect in terms of it and coming up with a guaranteed maximum price for each one of those. And we came very, very, very close to where the engineer had estimated what that cost was going to be and where we ended up in terms of it. So yes, this is a process we've done before, it's a process that we have followed before. When you do a CM at risk, those people who propose on it understand, if I don't make the first cut, then they will proceed along from there to, with the company that they ended up selecting. So that is the process that we have been following. And for the most part, we've done a good job, I think, in terms of where we are. I clearly understand the Commissioner's concern that when we go out and talk to people, we want to be able to say that here's the material that supports where we are. And I think our legal counsel has put forth a good suggestion that based on what Mr. Ward's staff did in terms of working with Cooper Construction and their subs, in terms of how you got to that cost and going back asking them again to get to that cost, maybe Commissioner Shof, that can help you all as commissioners understand that they did the due diligence in terms of ensuring the fact that this is the best cost that we could possibly come up with to build this outstanding building that we want to do in the Northwest.
Thank you.
Last question, Commissioner Puducy.
Thank you, Madam President. This construction stuff is kind of new to me, okay? But I do understand contracts and those type of things. Are we in privety of contract right now with Cooper Construction? Or is it pending approval from the Commission?
That's a law school word, there, brother.
I'm not on.
You're on.
Yes, I am on.
Of course, I did.
You're in the negotiation phase currently, correct? And that's what you're trying to find out, whether or not you want to move forward?
Commissioner, I don't know what privety means, but I can tell you that where we are in this process
You're not executing.
In contract.
We are in contract with these folks. We entered into a $45,000 contract with them initially last year to start doing work on the, on the project, selective demolition, and to help develop the project, working with the architect. And since that time, we've had two amendments to that existing contract as they have gone through the demolition process, and we replaced the roof that's on the existing building. So what I'm bringing to you on the 29th will be Amendment Three to the existing contract that we have with them for the balance of the construction process. So yes, sir, we are, I don't know if it's privety or not, but that's where we are.
So a follow-up. So yes, we are, but no, we're not for the Amendment Three. You know, we had a contract in place for the work that's already been
Right.
Completed at this point, of course.
And it's been done, right, been done, and they've virtually been paid. We owe them a little bit of money, but they're done.
But for the work that has yet to be done, we are not in contract until this Commission approves it?
Yes, that would be
So if we, and this is where I'm going with this, if we opened up this whole process and we start double checking the numbers and find that others come in higher, we could be opening a door to something that we don't necessarily want to open the door to.
Commissioner, there's a, there's a, there's a thing called a, there's a thing called a peer review in which, you know, you go to folks that are in a similar business and you would have, ask them to bid on the project, or in fact, give you an evaluation. We would have to pay them a fee to do that, a significant fee, because they are not going to sit there for three months and evaluate your numbers for grins. And in point of fact, if they came in with a lower number, you would have to be prepared to squeeze the trigger and hire them to do it and not the other guys, because they will not give you a number that then you come back and use as a bat to beat these folks over the head with. So if it comes in $3 million lower, I can't go back to Cooper and said, see, I told you, your number was too high. At that point, we'd throw the whole thing out the window and start over.
Commissioner Puducy, hold on one second. So I have no problem continuing this conversation. It seems like it's a really, that we all have continual questions on it. I do want to be aware that we have two more items on the agenda. So if you all would like to continue this conversation, we're happy to. Or if you'd like to move on and ask your questions directly and/or at the next CRA meeting, I'm open to, as long as everyone's still available for at least another 30 minutes, I would guess, on the other two items.
I guess the problem we have is that Commissioner Shof has asked that we may be provided with these numbers prior to this being considered by the Commission.
That won't happen. That won't happen.
Okay, so we're continuing the conversation on this. Commissioner Shof.
I just want to clarify what my ask is. I do construction projects every day, and you can make construction look like any number you want to on paper. So I'm not interested in trying to restart this whole process. What I'm interested in is how we got to the $10 million number. And I think the comparison that staff has already done will be sufficient to be able to take a look at numbers, because again, you can, you can make, you can make assumptions about quality of product, et cetera. So my suggestion here is not that we start this whole process over and have a three-bid comparison. We've gotten to that point already where now we have a number in front of us. I just want to understand how we got to that number in front of us. It sounds like there's been a comparison made already. I'm just asking that those numbers be provided before we are asked to vote on this.
Mr. Ward, we can certainly do that. I'll have Arturo do his analysis on a, on a simple thing, and then I'll give you all the background. I want to remind you that I commented that our first GMP that we got in, which I did not bring to you, our first GMP came in January, and it was 10.8 and change. I don't, I can't recall the exact number, but it was $400,000 north of this number. And as a result of our going back and negotiating, we've reduced it by that point, by that amount of money. But we have, we have continued to look at the comparison of the subs, and I can give you that, and you can, you can see for yourself, certainly.
That would be sufficient for me, thank you.
Good.
Commissioner Neary.
Thank you. And thank you for your comment, Commissioner Shof. I think it's important because as the lone Commissioner, who was a part of choosing Cooper Construction, and it's public, Cooper Construction was not my first choice. But in fairness to Cooper Construction, it was a thorough process, and it was one that all of us, I believe, you know, as Commissioners would support, that, you know, our Commissioners went through the due diligence, we reviewed all of the respondents, and we voted on it. And Cooper Construction, we felt like, because obviously at that point, we were all going to, we were all supportive of Cooper Construction, once they had won, was the most qualified and that we were going to move forward. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, obviously, look into the numbers as we should. I mean, we absolutely should do that. But I do want to say again, as the lone Commissioner, that that process, as you know, was not willy-nilly. It was, we took it very serious. We spent an inordinate amount of time reading the proposals and then, again, coming up with, with someone to take this development forward.
Thank you for the community outreach that you've done on this project. I think I've seen a number of us at those meetings, and they're usually very well-attended. I did have one big-picture comment to make about the comment you made about surveys and that your staff mentioned, you know, maybe for this project, that residents didn't want to fill out a form. I would argue that that's a generalization you could make for anybody who wants to give feedback. They'd much rather talk and, you know, do the visual than fill out a form. And so, Mr. Green, I would, you know, just share that with you and the rest of the city staff, that that's a great way to get feedback.
Can I make one more statement before you conclude this one item? I just wanted to correct in case anything I said was misleading, that when we did the original selection with Cooper, they were contracted prior to the completion of the design phase. And following the design, the contract contemplated that there would be an amendment to approve the GMP before the construction commenced. And that's kind of, that's where we're at now. We also have 17 pages of backup for the amount, if you would like to have those documents.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Madam President, I want to apologize for taking the amount of time we have this morning. I'm an old-school guy, and I typically, I was raised to make it look easy. As a professional, I'm supposed to make this job look easy. It hasn't been by any stretch of the imagination. I want to thank my staff for a tremendous amount, and the consultants, and the architect, and the team from the contractors. This has been an arduous process, all aimed at bringing you a project that will be a legacy piece, something you can be proud of, and we're excited to move it forward. So I'm assuming from this, then you want me to bring it on the 29th for your consideration?
Sounds like there's consensus for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation and summary as well at the beginning, before you got into the numbers. I think that that's really helpful, not only for Commissioners to refresh those of us or new Commissioners, but also for the public. And I also want to thank our Commissioners for engaging in lively discussion. I think that this is what helps us make sure we understand what we're ultimately voting on.
Good, thank you.
All right, moving on to another fun topic, medical marijuana dispensaries. And I had asked for this to be on our, on a work session agenda. I really appreciate Mr. Rick Green sharing with us, I think he copied all of the Commissioners on an email of the extensive presentations to the planning board, to DAC, to the Commission, to Commission work sessions. And by no means did, when I requested this to be on a work session, did I mean to reiterate anything that, you know, we necessarily covered then, although just as Mr. Ward did, I think a nice summary is always very helpful. I recall when we approved this about a year ago, that we did have some discussion amongst the Commission that we would like an update, since this was something fairly new, not only to West Palm Beach, but to, to our state, that we'd love to make sure that we're keeping our finger on the pulse of what's happening with medical marijuana dispensaries in our city. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. For the record, Rick Green, Assistant City Administrator, what we'd like to do today, and Paul Greilich has been tracking the medical marijuana for the last three or four years, I affectionately refer to him as our drug czar. But what I've asked him to do today, and we've collaborated on the presentation, talk about the legislation that got us to the point where we're at now, specifically Senate Bill 8A. We'll talk a little bit about the history, the meetings that we talked about with, and the workshops with both the Planning Board, Downtown Action Committee. We'll talk about some of the conditions that are in place as a result of that legislation and some of the things that we've done, particularly as it relates to security. And I know one issue that we've heard about in the community is our first medical marijuana dispensary is MedMen, the northeast corner of Clematis and Rosemary. Just so the Commissioners know, and Paul will touch upon that, they have been cited because they've covered their windows, they've taken the position that that's required by a state inspector. We've conferred with law, we don't agree with that interpretation, but Paul will get into that. So Paul is our senior planner, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Rick. Paul Greilich, Senior Planner for the record. So Rick did a good job, I'm just going to jump right in. I first wanted to give a national picture of what's going on in this arena. You have nationwide, you have 29 states that have legal medical marijuana, you have nine states that have legal recreational marijuana. In Florida, obviously, it's just medical. In order to qualify, though, you need to have a serious condition. It's cancer, epilepsy, glaucoma, HIV/AIDS, Crohn's, Parkinson's, MS, PTSD, ALS, or comparable medical condition. You need to be prescribed by a qualified physician. The medicine is dispensed in the form of oils, extracts, sprays, edibles, and most recently, smokable medical marijuana became legal in March. Delivery of medical marijuana is available in the state of Florida. Municipalities may ban dispensaries. The registry just reached 240,000 patients, and there's now 144 dispensaries statewide. So it's growing relatively rapidly. In West Palm, or sorry, in Florida, it was legalized in 2014. In November of 2016, the voters of West Palm Beach voted to expand the availability of medical marijuana by 77%, a significant margin. In Palm Beach County, it was 75%. In the state of Florida, it was 71%, so achieved the supermajority required. Subsequent to the vote, we took an ordinance to our planning board that allowed dispensaries. That ordinance contained separation distance between individual dispensaries. However, we passed a moratorium in anticipation of Senate Bill 8A, and that basically turned everything upside down. It said municipalities can either ban or allow dispensaries. If they allow them, they regulate like a pharmacy, plus a 500-foot separation distance from schools. So they made a roughly equivalent. We then took this item to the First Mayor Commission Workshop, back to our planning board again. Second moratorium was passed, a second workshop, a third moratorium, a third workshop. The Downtown Action Committee voted unanimously to allow dispensaries, a fourth vote by the planning board to allow dispensaries, and then finally unanimous vote in June of last year to allow dispensaries. So just an update of the dispensaries in the city. Rick had mentioned MedMen, they're very visible on the corner of Rosemary and Clematis. There's three others that we think are proceeding right now. One is the old Sersebeauty Building on the corner of Quadrille and Clematis. The other is 2500 South Dixie in the south end, and then 1560 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, just right in front of Home Depot. We recently received an inquiry about 525 Clematis, that's the Sunfest space, but they haven't proceeded any further than the zoning confirmation. So Rick mentioned MedMen. This is what the building looks like when the windows are open. It's a much different look, very modern, contemporary concept inside. They were cited in, on June 26th for violating the DMP's transparency requirements, so hopefully that'll be resolved expeditiously. I mentioned Senate Bill 8A and dispensaries and pharmacies. Basically, it's any commercial or industrial or mixed-use district in the city. The DMP is very permissive in terms of uses, with the exception of the Northwest, Brelford Park. You can, a pharmacy can locate pretty much anywhere in the downtown master plan. So drilling down a little further, you got the north end. The red parcels are an allowable location, and the gray is a buffer around the schools. So that's the downtown master plan area. On the right there, the western communities, village area, the south end, the industrial areas and the commercial corridors, South Dixie and Georgia have. So the state has in place, it's a complex licensing scheme. To summarize, it's based on population, and then they break it down even further into districts. The take-home point is here is that the, it's a hypothetical maximum, once the registry reaches 400,000 patients, there will hypothetically be about 264 dispensaries in Martin, Palm Beach, Broward, Miami-Dade, Monroe Counties. So Senate Bill 8A contains some important security measures relative to dispensaries, namely, the requirement for a fully operational security alarm system, 24-hour video surveillance, sufficient lighting, an isolated waiting area to dispense medicine, restricted hours of operations, the requirement that medicine is stored in a secured vault, and then at least two employees on the premises at all times, and then the requirement to report any theft to local law enforcement within 24 hours. We were directed by the Commission to look at the potential impacts that dispensaries have on communities. A lot of uncertainty as it's a new market, it's a new industry. So we reached out to a cross-section around the country, medical, recreational, both. And what we found out is that basically, crime does occur at dispensaries, however, it's roughly equivalent to that of a convenience store, nothing above and beyond traditional retail. There's the perception of cash on premises, as these are all cash businesses, as marijuana is illegal in the eyes of the federal government. However, the enhanced security is often a deterrent to crime, there's a need for comprehensive data gathering, there's differences in law enforcement regulatory structure across the country, and then lastly, the limited duration of legalization nationwide. So moving forward, West Palm can either continue to allow dispensaries per the ordinance that passed last year, ban dispensaries, or alternatively impose additional standards to pharmacies that would also apply to dispensaries such as a separation distance requirement. That concludes my presentation. I assume you guys have questions, so I'm here to answer, you have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Somewhere along the line, I heard that we did have some sort of distance separation requirement. Is that, that is not the case?
For the schools only, from what I recall.
Yeah, so it's 500 feet from a elementary, middle, or high school, public or private.
But not from each other?
No, and that's per the state.
Yes, Commissioner Shof.
So question as it comes to our, our local allowances, just go through this with me.
Sure.
On the window requirements, we have that in On the window requirements, we have that in Clematis Street for our open, open windows. On Clematis Street, on Northwood Road. Is there anywhere in the south end that has that same requirement?
I'm, I'm looking at Anna who handles downtown. That's a, a condition specific to our downtown master plan. We do have provisions, they may not be the same as our downtown master plan, but do apply to other areas of the city that Angela's here, so I'll defer to Angela.
Angela Van, Plan and Zone Administrator. Basis twenty-five percent outside of downtown, your window can't be, more than twenty-five percent cannot be screened with signage or covering.
So in essence, anywhere that had the signage requirements would be in direct conflict with the usage for a medical marijuana facility according to our city ordinances? Because if the state requires them to darken their windows, the city requires transparency.
That's, that's not what the state requirement is.
We don't believe that that's a state requirement.
The state requirement is that they can't advertise.
Advertise.
And they're construing that to mean that if you can see inside, it's advertising, and we don't interpret it the same.
So in this picture, Commissioner, I mean certainly they can have the sign facing inward, they can't have it at the window advertising outward. So their interpretation is let's cover the window, but we think there's a way to orient any advertising inside the building without covering the window.
So if, if that's the way that, that things would continue, let's just say that is what the interpretation is, any medical marijuana facility that was within the same district of the window covering ordinance would be in violation of either the state or the city? And so if they followed state code and they were in a city violation, their choices would be, one, continue to be fined by code enforcement, or two, relocate to a different location that didn't have the window requirements, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Can you go back a slide from this?
Sure.
Yep, right there with the grid.
Next slide.
Excellent.
So it looks like we have maybe up to five who we're anticipating being here within one year, and, okay, so one is on Palm Beach Lakes. Where is the one on Dixie?
It's just north of Belvedere, on South Dixie.
Okay. So two on Clematis, and then this fifth one that hasn't applied for a building permit.
Potentially three on Clematis, one on Palm Beach Lakes, and then the one on South Dixie.
Commissioner Chef.
Being that we're, we're tied closely together here, medical marijuana facilities and pharmacies, and I don't know if this is readily available data, if we were to impose some sort of distance requirement, understanding any facility, medical marijuana or pharmacy would be grandfathered into that at this point, but do we have any information about the concentrations of our pharmacies as of today? Is there a typical distance that pharmacies are apart? You know, I guess I'm just trying to gauge if we were to put any kind of regulations on pharmacies and medical marijuana facilities all in the same, as I think we've, we've had some other cities do across the nation.
Certainly, we could pull our business tax receipts to see where the pharmacies are located historically, as most of you know, where you see a CVS, you typically see a Walgreens on, on an opposite corner. So if you posed a distance separation requirement, any future CVS or Walgreens, Walgreens may have some problems with that restriction depending on how far we go.
So in essence, we would be regulating the competitive market of pharmacies?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly can pull that and do that exercise, but we can look at where they are.
If we could find that information, I would find that very helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Nearing?
Thanks. Yeah, I've, I've been pretty consistent in my, my stance on this. First of all, I think the market decides. I don't, you know, this proliferation of, of medical marijuana companies coming to Clematis Street, I, I just, it doesn't, it doesn't spook me, because again, I believe that the market will decide that. The other thing is I look at the voters, both in the state, in the county, and in the city overwhelmingly supported miracle, miracle, medical marijuana. And then quite frankly, from a personal standpoint, not me personally, but my family, I have a family member who, who suffers with Crohn's disease, and, and I know how important it has been and is for them. So I, I look at the outcome of it, and again, I'm, it's somewhat germane to, to this topic. But in terms of, you know, creating ordinances to, to keep these establishments, you know, my term, no one's made this term, but off of Clematis, because I've heard that kind of out in the ethos, if you will, I just, I, you know, I, again, I think the market decides that, and I, you know, six or seven months ago, maybe a year ago, where there was all of this fear that there, there would be chaos and, and constant, just pollution, if you will, of bad actors around these establishments, that's not what I've noticed, and that's not, you know, the information that I've seen, both across the state and the other municipalities that have taken this on. So again, I, I appreciate it being brought up, and I know, again, that this is something that the residents, that I've, I've kind of seen throughout social media and other places regarding this topic. But again, I, I think the market decides these things, and for us to kind of legislate this issue, I just, I don't, I don't really see the need for it, but that's my two cents.
You know, I, I certainly agree that this was overwhelmingly approved by our voters, and I wholeheartedly support medical marijuana and the use, and I, I, what is more of the conversation for me is more about, you know, the majority of the five that are on here are on one street, and is, I, I also appreciate that in a year, we haven't really seen, to your point, Commissioner, we haven't seen bad actors, we haven't seen negative effect of this yet, but just that we, as policymakers, have a discussion on whether or not this is the direction that we want to see on our main street. Commissioner Pedusi.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, let me just say that I am a supporter of medical marijuana. What I'd like a little just background information from our legal team or from our city attorney is, where do we stand currently in the conformity of, of these dispensaries with federal statutes? And how does that impact us? Is there any impact? Do we have to be concerned at all about, about federal statutes or federal law?
Absolutely.
Loaded question?
I can't, here you are. We, we always have to be concerned with federal laws. But as it relates to the regulation of marijuana, as you see across the country, the federal government has taken a backseat, and there is not imposing upon us their federal regulations to date. Now, obviously, if something came down that changed the state of, of the federal government telling states what they should and shouldn't be doing as it relates to the importance of marijuana for medical purposes, then we would have to address that. But as it stands today, the, the federal government is not enforcing that part of the law as it relates to medical marijuana on the individual states.
So if I understand correctly, there are laws on the books, they're just not currently being enforced when it comes to dispensaries for medical purposes?
To my knowledge.
And it would may differ if it was for recreational purposes? Like some states have...
You have, you have a number of states along the coast that, according to the, well, actually on both sides, that apparently are selling marijuana for recreational uses and are regulating that, and the federal government, to our knowledge, has not stepped in and said, no, you can't do that. But does it mean they can't or won't in the future? Now, I, you know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but certainly if they said to all of the states that you, you can no longer do this, we would have to pay attention, it's a federal law. Federal law is just a, you know, the law we all follow.
Last follow-up. The reason I bring it up is that I know the Florida Bar has cautioned those of us who are attorneys to be very, very, very careful how we counsel our clients, and especially clients that may be in this business. And that's since, since they've gone out of their way to say we need to be very careful because of the federal, existing federal laws, I just was wondering how that potentially impacts us, but I think you've answered the question. I won't hold your feet to the fire anymore. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'll add that we had a robust discussion at the planning board on that very topic. We have an attorney that was sitting at the board at the time, and I think Paul will tell you, that's the reason it's a cash business, because some of the states do not allow medical marijuana dispensaries. And it's very complicated interbanking laws, but that's primarily why you see all the medical marijuana dispensaries as a cash business.
Yeah, just to interject, it's, the federal government views it as a Schedule I substance that has no medicinal qualities whatsoever, so that's, that's what, that's their stand on it.
And that's under discussion currently, too, is my understanding. So it's, it's, we will see, as they continue discussing at the federal level.
Thank you. Given that this, that our commission passed, maybe, I don't know if it's been six, eight months ago, that we passed allowing office, non-retail office space to be open on Clematis, I'm curious if staff has given some thought to what types of red flags would you be looking for where you might make a suggestion that there might be a change needed on our main street?
That's something that Anna and I have been discussing with Angela for some time now. Yes, we have concerns about some of the businesses. We had them prior to effectuating that change, you know, less than a year ago. To Commissioner Nearing's comment, you know, we were hoping the market would kind of dictate and keep everything in checks and balances. You know, we're seeing some uses maybe along Clematis Street that we would like to see less of, but that's an ongoing discussion and then something that we will continue to look at. And certainly, if the commissioners want us to look at any uses in particular, we'll gladly do that.
Commissioner Chef.
Thank you, and I think, you know, I echo my fellow commissioners, this has been voted on many times. I think my suggestion is to have a better level of understanding, because I'm certainly not here to dictate the market on pharmacies, bars, medical marijuana facilities, or, or anything else. But I would just like to understand, being that this is a unique situation where by, by law, we've tied two, I don't know if you want to call them related entities, unrelated, I guess it takes whatever your perception is on, on the issue, together, it, it kind of lumps everything all into one. And, you know, I think we need to be mindful of anybody coming in, you know, and I know staff has been really thorough in looking at the windows, for instance, you know, anyone, I don't care what kind of use you are, are required to comply with what, what our ordinances are, and I think that's the most important thing. If you're here and you're being a, a well-run business, then you should be here running a well-run business. So thanks to staff and all their research on this, I know it's an ever-changing topic and will continue to be a topic, and so there may be a time in the future where this comes up again because there's been some significant change either federally, locally, so I, I look forward to continuing this conversation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the emergency management training and processing. Commissioner Chef, I don't know if you have some comments?
Thank you, yes. We have had several significant changes with emergency management, with the acquisition of new equipment from both the fire department and, I know, police department, and as well as being in the middle of hurricane season, I've had a lot of questions from residents about the city's emergency preparedness, and looking at various FEMA requirements as we've had cities that maybe aren't up to their FEMA requirements, et cetera, and so I wanted to have a discussion about what the city of West Palm Beach's plan is, as well as seeing, I know, I had a chance to view the EOC here at Station Five, and it was very eye-opening for me on all the great things that the city has in place, and wanted to know from a commission's standpoint, as leaders in our community, how can we better be trained? How can we be better involved and, and ready to distribute that kind of information in the case of any emergency, be it a hurricane, we now have a bright line train that runs through our city, you know, we're ever-evolving. So all the great things that you've been working on, we'd love to hear about.
For the record, Assistant Chief Brent Bloomfield, I'm also the emergency manager for the city. So I just got a little brief overview of emergency management for the city and kind of, maybe I can answer some of those questions, and then we'll have to take questions at the end. So just a quick, what is emergency management? This is FEMA's definition of it, but basically it's however we prepare and mitigate for anything. I know we think of hurricanes here as like the big thing, but I want to remind you that we were a left turn away from being Pulse nightclub, and we were also, you know, the targets that happened down in Fort Lauderdale, that was a little close for home, we had a shooting at the airport, and then we also had Stoneman Douglas. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and we were trying to prepare and harden the city for a lot of those things, and as you'll see, we're working on a lot of projects for that. Just real quick, this is how the emergency operation breaks down. It goes from a level four to a level one. We're currently on a level four. Anytime we have a special event, we go to a level three, and of course, if we have any, any big event such as a hurricane or anything like that, we go to a level one. So we have learned a lot of lessons over the last couple of years. Luckily, they've been near misses or brushes, but Matthew and Irma, we learned some important lessons as far as us, and then also our response citywide up to Michael. We had, you know, fire, police, utilities go up there, public works, and then of course, myself in the state EOC. We learned a lot of things from that, including our communications internal and external were, were a big issue. Debris management, we learned a lot of lessons from that during Irma, you know, how we need to build, build better relationships. And then one of the biggest ones we talked about was FEMA classes, specific job function training during an emergency, and how we can better prepare for that, especially for FEMA section chief areas, which are, if you work in the EOC during any type of storm, the section chiefs are finance, logistics, operations, planning, and then we also have liaison and PIO, and the liaison sits at the county EOC during any type of activation, and that was very crucial during Irma. We were possibly less than half a day from losing water, and we were able through the liaison and chains to get what we needed up here as far as lime, to get the water plant back up and functioning. We also bring in a lot of the training over the next six months, and I'll talk to that a little bit. One of our biggest things right now is the dignitary protection and demonstrations. We have a lot of those, especially, you know, when the president's in town, he's, he's here almost every weekend, and, and that's, that's a big, for us, we have to get with Secret Service and FBI constantly about those, about those visits, and we're always training and doing tabletops for those, and we did one with the FBI just last year, it was, it was a big one. Special and potential events, some of the training that we need for that. We actually just did our first real unified command for Fourth on Flagler, and it was overall success. It was, it was great, we were all in the same room as far as a community events, police, fire, we had a representative from the National Weather Service here, we had cameras up downtown, we were able to kind of see everything, and we were overviewing, we're actually ramping up the EOC for, for that. It worked out great, we were able, I'll give you an example, we, part of this training is making sure that everybody understands unified command and how we, how we operate. We were able to, a female walked up to the firefighters, she saw the, we have a little, like we call it the popcorn machine, but it's a transport unit down there. She came up, said, hey, I lost my child, here's a description. As she's giving a description to them, they're giving it to us over the radio, police is listening in, they're giving a description out to all the police officers, we've got the cameras up and running, and we were able to look for that person, we located him in less than two minutes. So that's just an example of how unified command works and how this training is getting into that. You know, these are some of the things that, that we do, we call them soft targets. Anything that we do as far as a special event is considered a soft target, baseball is a soft target, any of these things that we are trying to harden against right now, including our facilities, are considered soft targets. So these are some of the upcoming opportunities. Chief Mooney and myself are collaborating with multiple departments. We're actually doing hazard and vulnerability walkthroughs right now of a lot of the, we just did one of City Hall in the library, we're getting ready to do one of the, of the public works and fleet areas, and we're going to continue that and do every building in the city. One of the things that we're looking at is improved communications through Everbridge. We're actually going to upgrade from code red to Everbridge, it's what a lot of the counties and the state and nationwide are using. It's gonna, it's gonna be a cost neutral for us, but it's gonna improve our communications overall throughout the city. Changing city culture through training, I think that we, we elaborate on that, we're, we actually are way ahead of a lot of municipalities when it comes to FEMA training. We have people, when we do FEMA training, I usually do multiples every year of the three and four hundred class, and it's, it's amazing to me, the people that come and they say, wow, we're, we're not nowhere near where you guys are at. So kudos to, to everybody in the city for that. We're also working on loss mitigation and FEMA funding for city projects, something that hasn't been done before. It's money that's out there, and we're not going to get it, and it's a lot of money that we're leaving on the table, so me and Chief Mooney are working on that project with, with engineering and building, and, and we're trying to, to figure out the best way to go after those funds, and also with our loss mitigation specialists. We're doing vulnerability assessments on all city progress, which I talked to before. Cybersecurity is a big one. We actually, I just sent Adam to a training, the AWR-136 training down in Fort Lauderdale, he came back and said, wow, that was amazing, so we're getting that, that's coming in the county, and we're going to send him about twelve people to that training to get us up and running for some cybersecurity. for some cybersecurity issues that we have dealt with. Also, we're going to continue to do what we were doing bi-annual tabletop exercises, we'd like to extend that to quarterly tabletop, one of those being like a blackout day where cybersecurity, we black everything out, and you're not allowed to use anything city, as far as computers or tablets or anything that's technology-driven, so we could see how that would happen if we had, similar to what Riviera did. We're working on that at this time. Current EM projects, we just got done doing the vulnerability, hazard and vulnerability assessment for the city, the natural one, which is natural disasters. We had Greenleaf NIMAC come in and do an assessment of the city, we worked with them for almost two years, and we're gonna, we are going to address the issues that they, that they came up with, and we're going to try to do that through PPL and FEMA funds. We're also doing, me and Chief Mooney are working on a man-made disaster hazard and vulnerability assessment right now, it's probably going to be another year or two project. The FEMA funding LMS, PPL, HMPG, these are all FEMA funding sources that we can get money through, they're matching funds. Some of the PPL money is, it's a 75% with a 25% match, but we can get the 25% through HMPG funds or HUD funds. EOC upgrade, what we're doing is we're upgrading the servers right now so that we can make that a true unified command post, so when we get the cameras throughout the city, what we can do is, we can see everything when we have these big events, especially on Clematis and, and on Flagler. We're working on the continuity of operations plan, emergency operations plan, and special events training through unified command. So these are all things that we're working on, and it's a lot, and it's two people, so it gives us a little time, but we're, we're working on it at this point. So, training, some of the things that we're, we're looking at, and I'm trying to, you know, the, the saying, be brief, brother, be brief, I'm trying to get to that, so. Meeting with vendors on July 24th to discuss incoming classes, we're going to bring all of those section chief classes and the classes for executive, executive policy group in the next six months to a year, we're going to have all of those classes available. And then, I'm going to send you, everybody, all the commissioners and, and city staff a copy of this so that you can go to these FEMA training sites, one is CertTrack, which is a state one, and then, of course, the FEMA site. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Chief Bloomfield. I think that we would all agree, you know, we're so appreciative of the work that you're doing, and that oftentimes, when you're doing your best work is when we don't even realize it, because that means disasters aren't happening or we're not feeling the effects of it, so thank you for that. Questions, comments?
Thank you. I just had a, a one question, well, a couple of questions, sorry. As far as stress testing our system, do we, you had mentioned about like technology blackouts, do we ever do, or do we have a schedule of full system stress tests where we work with police, fire, local hospitals, so if there would be any kind of, not natural disaster, but social disaster, that we're ready?
So annually, at least one time annually, we do a, we consider an active shoot or, or some type of man-made disaster where we do training that is all encompassing. It's police, fire, we alert the, we alert the hospitals, we get actors from like Palm Beach Atlantic involved, so we do a full-fledged drill, and, and one of the last ones we did was at 2601 North Flagler, where we actually detonated some of the doors, and we didn't tell anybody we were doing it. We don't tell anybody when we're doing these drills, and we scared a few, few citizens and people that were driving by, so, yeah, we, we are constantly doing these drills, and, and we don't, we don't like to advertise that, because we don't want people knowing what our tactics are.
Sure.
Same thing with whenever we, we work a real event, there's, there's some things that we're doing that we don't, we don't let out into the media, we don't tell anybody, and there's only a group of people about this big that know what's going on.
I think that's the true way to stress test, is to have those actual conditions. In, in helping with those things, you mentioned Everbridge, is there any other kind of technology that's either in the works or we're looking down the line as far as, you know, when there's an amber alert, we all get a message on our phone, when there's a silver alert? Do we have any citywide system as we're, you know, mostly smartphones at this point?
Yeah, so Everbridge will, will give us that, that functionality. It actually is going to be a huge step up from what we're, we're currently doing. It's something that I've already used through the county with my incident management team that I'm on, we do all of our alerts through that, all of our alerting, and we also, the county uses that for whenever they send out any of our emergency manager notices. So, yeah, we get, we do, we're gonna, we are going to upgrade in the next, I don't want to do it during hurricane season, but as soon as hurricane season's over, we are going to make that upgrade.
And then, how can we as commissioners, you mentioned a number of trainings, is there, is there something that's appropriate for this group, if anyone would want to jump in? I'm throwing my own name in the hat, I'll speak for myself, but something that we can be involved in so that we can be better trained and have more knowledge?
Absolutely, and first of all, I want to thank, you know, all the commissioners for coming out, all of you came out. Commissioner Naring has been out multiple times, and previously, and I just want to thank everybody for coming out. All of you came out to the EOC and kind of took a tour, and then also, I, I kind of gave you a rundown of what your responsibility, or what I think your responsibilities would be during, during a storm. The, what I would say, there is a training going to come up, it's a G191 class, and I'll, we're, we're going to have that for the executive policy group, and you're more than welcome to join, and we'll, of course, we'll open that up to other municipalities, because there's a lot of municipalities that, that don't offer that. Is, you know, the biggest thing for the commission is to, during a disaster or after disaster, is being with your constituents, getting, getting that face-to-face interaction, getting that interaction in, on, you know, on the streets, you know, and, and kind of just feeling out what, what their needs are, and then kind of getting that back to us in the, in the EOC. Also, whenever we put out a notice, we'll put out a notice to all of, you know, all of you first before we even do a briefing of what's going to happen, so you can let your constituents know. One of the biggest things that, that I've, you know, happened up in the panhandle, we lost complete communications. There was no cell phones, you know, even though you'll hear AT&amp;T and Verizon say there was, there wasn't. There also, you know, there wasn't a lot of radio communication, there, there wasn't a lot of communication except for face-to-face. So that's what we're going to be, you know, whenever that, that big storm happens, or we have an issue with something more major, we, we need you to kind of get other information from the people in yours, in your districts back to the EOC, that, so we can work on getting everything back up and running and recover from whatever it is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Riles?
I just have one question. Given the events that occurred in Virginia Beach, have we done anything to try and harden our target here?
Yes, sir. We, we actually did a vulnerability assessment through the building with myself, Chief Mooney, Tim Scott from RISC, IT, Yolanda Mack from IT, and what we looked at was how we're gonna, where we're going to be placing more cameras, we're going to be restricting access, you're going to see a directive come out here shortly, restricting access to, in and out of the building. We won't be letting people use side doors anymore. I mean, it's going to be a pain for a little while, and I, and people are going to be a little upset by some of the things that we're doing, but we're doing them for the protection of everybody, especially in this building, but also citywide.
Great, thank you so much, Chief Bloomfield, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything on behalf of the mayor that you'd like to share with us, Mr. Green?
I do not have anything.
Anything else from my fellow commissioners? Thank you all so much for your time, appreciate it, we are adjourned.